We'll move to the superintendent report. All right. We will approve minutes, so if you give me one minute. It's requested that the board approve the following minutes. First, the minutes of the special meeting and executive session held on January 8th, 2019. May I have a motion? Mrs. Ritchie, seconded by Mr. Burke. All in favor? That is unanimous. Minutes of the regular meeting held on January 8th, 2019. Mr. Maroney. Seconded by Mr. Deneen. All in favor? And minutes of the special meeting held on January 15th, 2019. Mr. Maroney. Seconded by Mr. Burke. All in favor? That is also unanimous. We will move on to board committee reports. Seeing none. We're catching up on time right away. We'll move on to the presentation of the proposed new courses for the Darien High School's school year 2019-2020. Dr. De Silva and Mrs. Dunn.
So, Ms. Dunn will introduce the four new courses that we have planned for the fall along with Rick Sadlon, Jacqueline Sammis, and Rich Reynolds sitting in the back.
Good evening, thank you so much. We are very pleased to be presenting four different courses, electives at the high school. And just to give you a little bit of background, for those of you who may not know, it's a very collaborative process that we go through. A curriculum council with membership from every department begins by receiving course applications at the beginning of the year. That committee works through for a couple of months to vet those courses, ask questions about how they impact the rest of the school, what kinds of people might be interested in teaching them, what kinds of students would be interested in taking them, and so forth. From there, the recommended courses from that group come to the department leadership and the high school leadership committee, departmental council, we call it, at the high school, and we review those courses as well. Sometimes we send some back to the departments for revisions or for considerations. And eventually, we're able to sit down with our central office leadership and review those course proposals. So, these are the four that have come through that process. Two in our music department, one in art, and one in technology education. So, I will ask each one of them to give you a brief overview, and then we'll take questions at the end of that process. So, why don't we start with Rich Reynolds and the AP Computer Principles?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are proposing the AP Computer Science Principles course, which is relatively new from the AP Board. It started in 2016. This class is much different than our current AP Computer Science A course. The Computer Science A course is geared towards computer science majors or engineering majors who may want to go off and pursue this as a career. However, the Computer Science Principles class which we're proposing is open for anyone and everyone. I think you'd be hard pressed to find a career that doesn't have some sort of device in front of you most of the time. And this would allow that person to have an in-depth knowledge of how that thing works, how it integrates with other systems, cybersecurity. It's not a programming class like you would imagine a computer science class would be. That is really the home of the AP Computer Science class we already have. So, this is a much more humanities, or business, or medical, or something, career-oriented computer class. I'm sure you have some information, I'm happy to answer questions or something like that.
Are there board questions? Mr. Deneen.
Could you give just an example of students who will broaden their understanding of computer science through diverse localized projects?
Sure. Some of the things that have been talked about on the college board is students designing and making an app, let's say, that helps a local organization with donations, or helps them organize their infrastructure, helps them, you know. I'm imagining we could use this to help build apps and build websites and do things like that for the Board of Education, for local organizations through clubs and stuff like that. And it's supposed to be kind of a localized idea.
Mr. Maroney.
Is there any need for additional computer equipment that is not iPad-based? Do we need Microsoft products as well?
No, it can be done on any software. The language is not specified in the course. Like the other classes, you have to teach Java, you have to teach Python or something. This one is open to the teacher's interpretation on what they feel their students could use. So, at this time, there's no additional equipment required.
Mrs. McCammon.
Thank you for bringing a course like this forward. I think it's really exciting for there to be an educational opportunity that isn't maybe quite so intensive, so that you can catch students who might not pick that more intensive course. So, thank you. I do think it's important that we not allow it to become a gut. So, not that I'm saying that anything you have written here is, but I just think it's important.
A lot, and not a lot.
What is another word for that?
We use that term.
The course that kids take when they just want to get an A. So, I think it's, I just think it's important that it still be a serious curriculum that really engages people who might have, you know. I did not mean to accuse you of accusing you of writing a gut. I just think it's important that people have an appreciation for computer science regardless of whether or not they might take that path. And so, thank you for bringing it forward.
Well, can I just say the other AP Computer Science class is extremely rigorous. I would imagine this will be rigorous as well and not a gut class. I've never heard that term.
Thank you, yeah.
Mrs. McAmmer.
Thank you so much, I think it sounds really exciting. I'd like to take it. But when you mentioned that the audience is a little bit different than your computer, and I'm looking at your information that you shared about enrollment. So, how much of a correlation do you really feel that there will be between computer science, web design, animation? Is that a strong correlation, or might this open up a whole new universe of students, which you sort of allude to in your other dialogue?
It could.
I mean, are you prepared for the number of kids who might be interested?
Yeah. My anticipation, like I said in there, is that there may be a shift in student populations between web design, animation, some of the other computer classes that we offer. They may shift more towards this direction. But that's kind of the idea of the course, is to give anybody and everybody some background in computer science.
Right, that sounds good.
Yeah. There is a very strong core group of students who are very interested in computer science and engineering, who will stick with the current pathway that we have.
They'll go the other way, yeah.
Yeah. So, I don't foresee a major shift in any of our classes, or FTEs, or anything like that.
Mrs. Ritchie.
Just looking at your information here on the enrollment in the computer science courses, and I'm just looking at the advanced computer science, the full-year course, it seems like the enrollment is, it says five students in 2017-18, and then seven in 2018-19. Is that a course that you still feel is needed with this new course being offered?
That is a very interesting course. It's for students who've taken pretty much every other computer science course we offer. And it is a very rigorous, open-ended course, that students are allowed to find their own programs and their own projects, and really dive deep into a subject matter.
But it's not an AP course?
It is not, no. It often runs the same period as the AP class.
Your thoughts concord.
You were just saying that.
Okay.
So, it doesn't need up another time slot for the teacher, or anything, they teach it currently.
But is it typically students who have already taken that AP and then take this afterwards?
In some cases. In some cases.
Well, out of the seven, how many would have already taken AP?
I don't know what that number off the top of my head.
Half of them?
I just want to bring it back to this course.
Okay.
When we look at class and sections, when Mrs. Dunn presents enough, that's a good time for that conversation, but we got a full agenda. So, I just want to bring it back to this course, although I do think it's a fair question to hold. Dr. Landon.
I just want to state for the board that in terms of community access, if in fact there's a local business or group that is seeking an app for a particular function that they're doing, they would not be precluded from seeking your assistance and having individuals in the class help them develop the app.
Correct.
Other board questions? Okay, thank you, these are up for decision tonight, so we'll just hear this evening. Jacqueline Sammis for art.
Photo two.
Good evening, I have Chris Cags with me as well, who is our current digital, one of our current digital photography teachers. We're excited about offering our students Digital Photography II. Our Digital Photography I class has been very popular over the last three years, running four sections a year. We did a survey of students, and the student body seemed to say that they really would love the opportunity to take this again at an advanced level and have that second option. Looking at other schools in our DIRG, most of them offer at least a Digital Photography II, and then if not, further on to get to an AP level as well. So, that's something we're looking at for the future. We think that this class will pull probably from some of our black and white photography students, so it won't probably need any more FTEs, because I think it'll just kind of shift our students around in their interest in what they're taking. And we already have all of our cameras and computers and software, so there's no additional cost that way.
Any questions on Digital Photography II? Mrs. Ritchie.
So, you're saying you think instead of taking this photography, that students would probably go to the Digital II rather than taking the photography?
We think it probably will pull from some of those students, not all of them. Sorry, black and white Photo II is open for students to take more than one time. So, a student might elect to take a Digital Photography II if they've taken one, as opposed to taking black and white for the second time around.
Okay. Other board questions?
Well, just, you talk a lot about AP.
Yes.
But this wouldn't be an AP course?
It's not an AP course, but it would, we're looking at a bigger vision for a year or two down the line of offering the AP 2D design in a photography platform. So, we would want to have that track similar to our ceramics and our drawing and painting track, which is two full years.
So, they would take photography and one and two, and then digital one and two, and then move on to an AP?
Correct, that's our kind of bigger vision down the line.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I've got two courses that we are proposing. One of them, the first one is percussion ensemble. This is a course to better serve the population of students that we are already serving. And basically, what percussion ensemble is, the impetus for it is to engage the students that we have in our band, the percussion students, which we have 23 of them, in our band program. And basically, it's pulled out of that, I shouldn't say pulled out. It's another course that all band students in grades nine through 12, unless they make, this is going to sound complicated, but unless they make wind ensemble, which is an honors-level course, they will probably take four or five of those students, and they don't need more than four or five of those students. But now, John Grower, our band director, has been taking more of them, because we want to engage the students and get them performing. I could put it in a different way. The band literature that they're performing doesn't always require 23 drummers, or 20 drummers, to play at a pace of band music. The balance is out. So, John's been picking music that has a lot of percussion in it. But we'd like to do some literature that maybe isn't just full of percussion, to try to keep as many as they can. And even then, if you'll see some concerts, maybe five or six students will be performing. While the others aren't performing that piece, then they'll switch off. So, they might be playing half of the, half of those selections that they have. You just can't accommodate that, aren't that many parts without compromising the integrity of the music, in other words. So, we feel that we can serve that population of students much better by having percussion ensemble where they focus on percussion music. They all learn all of the instruments, they're playing all of the time, they're always engaged, and they're going to be learning a lot more. For concerts, we have a couple of evening rehearsals, we would then put them together. They would learn the band music also, or however many, they would put them together still to support the band, but they'd have their own ensemble to perform higher-level music and more difficult music, and they could be challenged a little bit more. So, we're seeing that, we have all this potential there in all these students, and we're not able to like utilize them in the best capacity and challenge them all to what they really could be capable of. So, that's the first one. We have, like I said, 23 percussionists now. The middle school has 43. And they're coming, they're coming this way. So, that's right, they're, so, we know that this is going to always be, you know, when you ask how many people might sign up for this, well, it will be all of the percussionists except for about four or five that will be in the honors wind ensemble. Now, we also anticipate that some students in our wind ensemble program who are really into percussion are going to sign up for this as well. This might be another elective choice for them. And also, it's an entry point for some students who maybe play piano or a keyboard instrument, they're really good at mallets, so they could do that. We could offer this for them as well. And we also see some students in our other ensembles that are very musical, they would want to be in this ensemble as well. So, we might actually draw from other ensembles or students that aren't in the band program now. So, this would be another offering for those kids as well.
Okay. Board comments and questions?
Okay.
Mrs. McCammon. I do have one question, or comment. Again, I'm glad to see a broadening of arts and music, you know, whether it's photography or percussion. Just to acknowledge that I'm glad, anytime we're looking at a breadth and having a nice balance and being able to serve the needs of more kids. So, thank you for bringing it forward.
Sure, thank you.
I have a question, are we finding, I know the teacher is looking for ways to have students showcase themselves. Are we finding students in increasing numbers? I'm not asking it clearly, I'm sorry. We have 43 at the middle school percussion. What's our typical flow? Are we, do they all tend to flow? So, you're anticipating 43 percussionists?
No, no, we, our band is about 62, 63% last year of all the eighth graders go into ninth-grade band. So, maybe 60-something percent, and I can't say that's like that for every instrument.
Yeah.
But we get about 60%, which is a really good number from eighth to ninth grade, that continue, and then they continue all the way through. So, even if we hold out our current numbers, we should have 20 to 25. If we don't pick anybody else up from anywhere else, we should have about, I'd say around 20 students per year that are built right in. So, when a student signs up from eighth to ninth, they'd sign up for percussion ensemble, that would be their band.
And there's also no FTE increase here?
There is no FTE increase.
Okay. All right. Thank you, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. McAmmer.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, so they would do, I'm sorry, band and percussion?
No.
Okay, that would.
One or the other.
Okay.
We'll move on to guitar.
Okay.
Oh, I just had another.
I'm sorry about that. So, do they not perform in the concerts?
They do, they would.
Would it be a separate?
The band parts for percussion tend to not to be, like I said, well, maybe four or five students, or six students, and a lot of them are waiting around to perform or get, you know, switched in for another piece. Or, so they would learn that music as well outside of the band, in their percussion ensemble. And then they would join within, on the concerts. There are before-school, not before-school, after-school rehearsals, maybe a couple of them before concerts, and that's when they would put everybody together. This will also benefit the wind players, the people who don't play percussion, because now, our teacher can spend much more time with them rather than, these guys are sitting there, I better address them. And when you consider these classes, there's 670 kids in the class. So, you have 50 sitting around while he's working. We work it out, so they're all busy, but 50 are not as engaged when he's working with the percussion, and then they have to switch over and that kind of thing. So, it would be better for everybody.
We'll move forward to the guitar class, please.
Okay. The guitar class is something new now, which serves a population of students that we don't currently serve. And it would be another, we see it as another growth area, entry point into the music department. We teach ukulele at our elementary schools, we teach some guitar at the middle school. We don't have anything for students who have those skills carry on to the high school. So, that's a curricular connection that we're making. Also, out of some 1,400 students at Darien High School, we have about 325, 350 in the music program. That leaves about 1,100 students that are not getting any music. They're not served, we're not serving that population. We have the kids who are in band orchestra chorus, some music theory, some music tech, but there are a lot of students out there that may be interested in taking a music course. When we did a survey, it was a few years ago, 2012, I don't know if you saw this in the description, but it was the third most popular class that seniors thought they would, might want to take as a senior. So, we're addressing that need a little bit later than we thought, but, you know, trying to figure out how this all works, and how it's taught, and all that. But I think it's time to address that need, or at least offer it. And I'll tell you, it's a semester course, it's a one-semester course right now, kind of a survey course. Somebody's looking for something that they want to do, participate in the arts or in music before they graduate. But down the road, the vision is that we have a full-fledged guitar ensemble that might be band orchestra chorus guitar ensemble. That's their own entity, that we have two levels of it maybe, and, but we have to see. This is what, we're giving this a shot, trying to answer some needs of students and requests. And I think the population is there. We guess, we think it's there, but this is a new course for us.
Mrs. Stein.
Thank you. Would this be a one semester and done, or if you liked playing guitar, you're, you know, never taking guitar before you sign up, you take the elective, you want to take it again, can you repeat the course? Or is it just, so what's the path if you do want to?
Yeah. I would like it to be like that eventually, but I think since it's a new course for us, we're going to try it once. And then, yes, you could, we'd like to have two levels of it. The entry level for somebody who's never done it before, and then once those kids develop some skills, we could have the second level of that too. But right now, I think we don't know, the unknown is how many students are going to sign up for a new course. And the indication was there, by the survey, that this might be something that students would be interested in. I think we're going to have to wait and see. But eventually, to have a guitar, a full-fledged guitar ensemble for those students who could take it each year like band orchestra and chorus, that would be, that would be the down-the-road vision.
Mr. Maroney.
In the notice, I saw that you're going to take guitars from Middlesex to use this, will that put a, will Middlesex be affected by not having a guitar?
Oh, no, no, they're going to have as many guitars as they've always had. So, we're not sure how many students are going to sign up for that. I don't want to buy 20 guitars if we have 15 students right now. But we have an inventory of guitars, I should say, that we, you know, depending on the size of the class at the middle school. So, we should be okay, and we might need to pick up a couple extra guitars, but it wouldn't be a big-budget implication. We'll have to see from the initial signups what we get. We already have some guitars at the high school from past years of different things. There used to be a guitar club, actually, that students got together on their own. That's another indication like, hey, there's some interest. They used to do it on their own after school, 15, 20 kids had a guitar club.
Mrs. Ritchie.
So, just based on what I've read and what you've said, there won't be a performance aspect to this particular class?
No, there would, this class would have a performance at the end of some sort, of the end of the semester.
Okay.
They would be going toward a performance of some sort.
Not part of the concert band, it would be separate?
Yeah, it would be separate, yeah. And they might, they might perform at the library, they might perform for an open house, they might perform, but we do want them to perform. That's the carrot at the end of, show us what you've learned.
Mr. Burke.
One last question, and I don't know if this is to you or to Mrs. Dunn, is that you referenced that this is the class that had the third most desire to be had in 2012. Have we implemented the first and the second?
You're really asking my break. I think so. I think so. We survey and resurvey the kids occasionally over those years, so we do respond to those. So, on the survey, it is a survey that's six years old at this point. Is there a thought about maybe resurveying and seeing if the interest is still there? The interested students have since left and graduated.
Yeah, I mean, we, it's part of that curriculum process. We, departments do some of that surveying within departments. So, people might ask, you know, forensic science was one of those classes that students were looking for. So, the science teachers may talk to the freshman biology class and say, would you be interested? How many students here would be, more informally? But I can talk to curriculum council about doing a broader survey again. It's, we try to respond to what the students are interested in with these courses as we come forward.
So, do we also feel that there are enough, or there are adequate offerings for fine arts electives for kids who are looking? I mean, in some ways, the semester course is a great way for a kid who needs that last fine arts. Do we currently feel like we have enough offerings for that? Are we able to schedule kids in that? Are we finding that kids are booked and we don't have a way to offer them another class?
I think that we answer the needs of the course requests every year. You know, there are students who sometimes have to make choices in their schedule because of the many interests that they have. But we, you know, we create the schedule by saying, what does everyone want to take? And we start with those numbers. So, if we had 40 students sign up for guitar, we'll try to create two sections of guitar. We don't say there's one section of guitar and the rest of you'll have to wait.
No, I think what I, and I think you have the answer, but what I'm asking is, do we have kids who are saying, you know, all the fine and practical arts are filled up, and I don't have the option of another course such that we need to add another fine and practical arts? Or is this class being presented to us because students are interested in it?
I think it's both. I think it's that they're interested in it. And I also, we also want to make sure that we've offered enough diversity that they're able to select a course that they're interested in, and not just take a fine arts, because this is the one that's left. But I do feel, you know, as I said before, we're gauging, we're creating, the master schedule at high school is completely different this year than it was last year. It will be determined by what students have elected to pursue, and not by some predis, you know, supposition about what we expect them to take. We run from those numbers.
Any other questions? No, thank you very much.
No, thank you.
All right, we will move on to the report on enhancements of technology and computer education courses at Middlesex Middle School. Dr. De Silva.
Okay, good evening. Joining me, we have Shelley Somers and her administrative team, along with Rich Reynolds. Rich Reynolds, who is, as you know, the technology coordinator, six through 12. So, this summer, like every summer, we are looking to enhance the curriculum in technology and/or computers and STEM, grade seven and eight. It is offered as a special to our students in those grade levels. And as we were beginning to plan for our summer work, what we realized is we needed to look at revisions within the curriculum, but we also needed to look at professional development. And what we also learned through some of our study is that there is a program called Project Lead the Way that offers both of those. In fact, they're pretty, they're married pretty tightly. In order to have access to the curriculum, your teachers need to be a part of the professional development and actually complete the professional development. The curriculum, or the units, let's just say, are similar to the way that we write our units. We look at our standards, whether that's Common Core State Standards, ISTE standards, technology, other technology standards, next-generation science standards, and from there, we develop a scope and sequence, and then from there, units. It's similar with Project Lead the Way. And so, when we were looking at how we were going to approach our revisions this summer, we felt that this was very well-suited to our needs, because both, it allowed for professional development and allowed for units of study that were aligned to that professional development. When we did a crosswalk of our current curriculum, we also realized that many of the topics that we do have in our curriculum are also in Project Lead the Way. And so, Project Lead the Way does allow us for some choice, meaning our teachers can look at the topics that are being offered and decide which ones best suit the needs of their students. But at the same time, it's pretty closely aligned to what we're already doing. So, in that vein, we decided that we'd like to move So, in that vein, we decided that we'd like to move in that direction for our summer work. And I'll take any questions that you have. And Rich is here, and Shelley is here as well.
Any board comments or questions? Can you talk about, a little bit about how Project Lead the Way STEM seventh grade, how that, where there might be things working in conjunction?
Um, in conjunction together, you mean with the-
Well, I'm just, right now, we have STEM in seventh grade, correct? They take that as an elective. That, are there, are there any crossovers, any skills that are being enhanced by working with Project Lead the Way for kids and their abilities to access their STEM as well?
For sure. Actually, it would be one and the same. So the computer classes and the STEM classes, the technology classes, let's just say, both will be receiving training within Project Lead the Way. So there's a number of units that they offer for middle school. And so once you're trained in that unit, when there's new content or topics that are come up that happen in technology more than, you know, yesterday is, is no, it's different today than yesterday, they give us the training, they give us the digital resources for both students and our staff. So as, so in this particular case, let's just say app creators, as things evolve within creating apps, they'll give us the tools, and our teacher the tools, to move on to the new generation of app creation. So we're always moving, and perhaps apps isn't what we're doing anymore, and there's a new topic or a new content, then we would just shift. So long as it's aligned to the standards, and we feel that it's appropriate for our scope and sequence in terms of development, we would continue with making the shifts that they're offering us. So the commitment really is to the professional development that's connected to the content.
Okay. Mrs. Stein?
I may have missed it when I stepped out. What's the budgetary impact, and is it within this budget already?
Yes, so it's actually, it's in my line around curriculum development, about seven thousand dollars. It's not significant. The supplies are actually in the school's budget because they would just replace whatever supplies the children had last year. Some of them are fixed, and some of them are consumable.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Maroni?
Just a question on, are we comfortable with, if we're going to roll out these programs in middle school, which I think are fascinating and wonderful, that we'll be able to continue at the high school level with app creation, green architecture, magic of electrons, and so on?
So I'll let Rich come on up to speak to the transition to high school. With respect to the elementary level, we currently do have a STEM collaboration between the high school students and our elementary students. For those of you who have elementary children, you've experienced that before. We did not, we felt pretty strongly in the STEM units that we currently have at the elementary level that are facilitated through Linda Johnson's work and supported by Rich Reynolds and his team of students that actually come down from the high school technology classes. But I'll let Rich speak to the transition to high school.
As you know, the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade is tough for every kid. We find in the computer science and the technology and engineering departments that if our freshmen in particular were no longer here, but were here, we could take them much farther by the time they're eleventh and twelfth graders. So, I'm interested to see how Project Lead the Way could benefit all of those, those incoming freshmen, and then we will modify the high school curriculum and content and projects to, to support that, to fulfill that.
Any other questions? Thank you. We will move on to follow-up on discussion on unfinished business and possible modifications to the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty proposed Board of Education budget. Dr. Landen?
Well, let us begin, we, we, okay, let us, let us begin then with each of the questions that the board raised.
Would you ask a follow-up question?
The first question came up that the board was concerned about was the additional counselor at, at Middlesex. As you recall, we presented this several weeks ago. We said we would expand the counseling staff by one, which would give us two per grade level. It would be consistent with the new approach to guidance that Shelley Somers and her staff began to implement and have it underway. It will enable us to have counselors stay with kids throughout their three years at Middlesex, which will be a big boost for kids and their families and for our teachers, so that everybody really knows kids really well and can deal with any issues that affect them and their families. But I'll turn it over to Shelley Somers, who, as usual, will develop in a passionate way for these counselors, which we're all passionate about, actually, because it's such a great idea and such a great program.
As you know, from my many appearances, I have a vision, we have a vision, of providing the emotional, social, and academic support that all of our students need to be successful, not only in middle school, but in making the transition into middle school and then out of middle school. So what I imagine is developing a program where I have two counselors at each level so they can collaborate on interdisciplinary curriculum and have a number of push-in opportunities that, right now, they've only just gotten their feet wet in being able to accomplish that with students. I have a vision of counselors having FaceTime with every student, not being consumed with meetings, but having meetings that are essential to the success of students. I have a vision of developing a program with my team that really relies on best practice and follows the Connecticut framework in providing not only guidance lessons, but groups that students say are necessary for their continued success. I would, I have a vision of a program in which we can expand the meetings that we have with our teams about students of concern, so that we can provide early intervention for all students as the needs arise. With two counselors at every grade level, the collaboration between those counselors and with the, both the special education and the general education, the whole staff, that one additional counselor would really enable us to do that. Right now, I have two counselors that have to attend eight meetings, eighteen meetings a week, and the other, others attend fourteen meetings a week, and that's a significant difference. I have counselors who have to make a decision of, do I attend this eighth grade thing, or do I attend this seventh grade thing, which are equally as important to all parties involved. Having another counselor, they wouldn't have to make that choice, but it could tend to things that have the most impact on the success of our students. I'd like to see counselors be more responsive, hold groups, teach lessons across a variety of developmental, developmentally appropriate topics. It's wonderful to be able to collaborate with a colleague, to really understand and know the students as you travel with them through the three years of middle school. We feel that at this time, we don't need another psychologist. We know that those two roles, as we pointed out, are, are different. At the, at the middle school, things change a little bit. They share some common areas, but our counselors really kind of precede the psychologists. They, they have that connection with families and with students so that interventions are possible at an earlier time, so that our kids aren't struggling so much with their own identity, self-worth, and that they can be successful and feel good about themselves by the time they get out of middle school, which is quite a task. If you want more detail about the day and the actual impact, minute to minute, hour to hour, that this counselor would have, I, you might remember Anthony Pavia, school counselor, and Rachel, and they are more than willing to speak towards that if you have questions.
Question, board questions on the guidance counselor. Mrs. McCannan?
One of the things that keeps coming up in the conversation about the psychologists and the counselors is meetings. And it's hard, sitting up here at a board, to hear meeting, 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 and feel like we're doing the work we should be doing. So can you take a few minutes talking about whether you've looked carefully at meetings, maybe defend how many of them, or don't we have?
I, you know, you, you, people do suffer from meeting fatigue, and, and they're using that meeting time to be at those meetings rather than seeing students. So we really have looked at that. We look at that right from the minute I walked into the door of Middlesex by saying, which of those parent meetings are essential for the success of our students? Is there a better way to communicate with parents? Because we know that that communication is essential, that in our partnership with parents, is there a better way to communicate how a student is doing or if a student has specific needs? And I think that our school counselors have made significant strides in being able to communicate with that, so, about that. So right now, they, the counselors have to attend PPTs, they, they run the five oh four meetings. They also have at each, at each color team, a student of concern meeting that they run once a week, so that after collecting data on a student, teachers can bring that up with counselors before we take a look at SRBI or anything like that, so we can really take a look, they can really take a look, to see how we can best address those problems. So I think we've cut down on those meetings and really have put together a, a program that is able to explore the needs of each student. So I, I do, I think that we have really addressed that.
Board questions? Mr. Burke?
Just on the, on the charts that Mike just handed out, so in the, in the top chart, where it says, you know, school A, so the psychologist who's in there now has a caseload of thirties-
Guidance counselor.
I'm sorry, guidance counselor. I'm sorry.
We're at the very first question, guidance counselor.
Okay, you know what? I apologize, withdraw my question.
That's okay, because I didn't have the answer to that one.
All right, good. Okay.
So you talk a lot about getting middle schoolers to engage with our guidance counselors, which I imagine is a task in and of itself, trying to get middle schoolers really to engage with the adults. But their day is so packed, and I know we've worked in one, one time during flex, in the course of flex, for guidance to come in during flex. But how, how do you envision these counselors, again, a little bit like their psychologist, it's so amazing what we're asking you all to do. How, how do we picture them actually getting time with students between meetings and teachers? How is the touch point going to improve?
So we have minimized the number of meetings, or we're trying to continue to do that. I think that we use flex time, we use study time to run groups.
They're coming, they're coming.
I mean, we're here, so we might as well. Rachel Sanders, school counselor. So we do see, we see a big chunk of students during flex, during study hall, sometimes during their elective periods, depending on the student and the needs. Probably the most FaceTime we get is in the classroom. So just as an example, tomorrow, we have, we're kind of kicking off our eighth grade career exploration lesson. So myself, as well as Anthony, and there is actually a third counselor who splits the eighth grade, so we're, the eighth grade is split three ways, are looking to deliver the lessons tomorrow. Tomorrow is also Anthony's student of concern day in seventh grade. So trying to collaborate to kind of fit him in and see where we're kind of presenting to the students, and he really ends up kind of getting pulled across grades. You know, are we prioritizing the eighth grade career exploration lessons where we get the most FaceTime with kids? We're seeing every single kid tomorrow, across, every kid tomorrow will see a counselor in their class, which is, we'll see how all that gets pulled off, but we think we have it. However, he's being pulled in some ways, again, we tried to kind of do the best we could, but he's being pulled from student of concern meetings as well, which are just as important in, in another grade.
Anthony Pavia, school counselor. This is, I'm less intimidated this week, this, this week, and just a little bit more anxious, but, and, and, you know, I think Rachel hit the nail on the head, and I think Ms. Ackman also has set the table. I mean, I, I think in order to do our job, we have, you know, we want to be effective and efficient. And in, in terms of trying to service kids, you know, as I said, the last presentation we were at, you know, we're forward-facing, so we, we want to be with kids in front of the classroom, we want to be with kids in small groups. And, you know, we, we pull it off, you know, we, we get it done, but it's not as effective and efficient as it could be if we had that, that other counselor to equal the load, so that I'm not asking my colleagues to come out of what they might be needing to do to cover me, so that I can cover something as important as, you know, being in front of your kids. So, you know, last Thursday, you know, I was, I was going through my, my, my calendar, and last Thursday, period seven, so Thursday the seventeenth, there was an eighth grade Navy team meeting. A parent called, was very concerned about her child. I, I grabbed the team leader, and we, we, we sat down, and we, we had a really productive discussion, and came up with a strategy that's going to work for that, that child and that parent over the next couple of weeks. At the same time, I was actually scheduled for a seventh grade PPT, which is also equally as important. And also, there was the Navy team student of concern meeting. So I actually was supposed to be in three places at one time. And I, I eventually caught up with the rest of the Navy team to, to figure out what was going on with my kids. A couple of my kids were brought up. But then, you know, if I have a parent who's concerned about their kid, it's going to take me another day to, to get back to that parent and say, listen, we might, yesterday, it might take me two days to catch up with that parent, or to catch up with the staff who was sitting in that meeting. And it's not for lack of want, it's, 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 again, it's just trying to whack them all almost. And so when you're, you know, I hate to break it down like this, but, you know, we're, we're customer service oriented, so like, we want to get, we want to get those concerns heard, we want to get, you know, those concerns in front of the teachers, and then we want to come up with solutions as quick as we can. And, and that additional body would really help us do that, so.
Mrs. McCannan? Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Somers?
Yeah, I just want to add that for those of you who stay away from the middle school a bit, something magical is really starting to happen. Together with my team, we've put a lot of things in motion, and now the things we've put in motion are coming together and collaborating to put forth a really unique middle school experience, what could become a really unique and impactful middle school experience. And to me, it's probably the most exciting moment of my career. So we have an advisory period, we have a flex period. We're moving from a teacher-centered school to a student-centered school, which might not make sense to you unless you really are, I don't know, can see the whole picture of what a school is trying to do for a student. So now, all of these groups are starting to say, wow, well, you're good at this, and you're good, let's collaborate, and let's look at what student needs, let's look at the whole student, and let's together shape a program where our school counselor can push in and collaborate and teach, team teach with, with the general education teacher, not just in health, but maybe in English, where we have students looking at their future in terms of, with the counselor, who now they're not afraid to go and see if an issue comes up because they recognize that. So somehow, the pieces are really, it's like, all the gears are starting to turn together. And it will take, it's not going to happen overnight, it's been my fourth year, but I think that adding another counselor will really facilitate this, this project. When I came in, I was, I really felt the need for social-emotional learning. We have really, really bright kids who really didn't talk about their needs, and suddenly that has started to change also. It takes a long time to change a school culture, and I have to thank my counselors and my team and the advi, the people who create the advisory activities and our capstone people, because now all these parts are starting to make sense. And I think we'll combine to make Middlesex an even more special place than it was when I found it, so.
Mrs. McCannan?
So just pushing again. So it sounds like our counselors are really busy, and it also sounds like you have a really exciting vision for what they could be doing. But if we're adding a body, how much of what we really, how much time are you really freeing up to do some of the more proactive, more forward-thinking work?
I don't think we look at the addition of a counselor as freeing up so much as adding more, so, so much as being able to take a deeper look at grade-level concerns and the developmental issues that students present and being better, better able to serve those needs. So it's not as though by adding this counselor, they're magically going to have three or four hours to, wow, wouldn't that be great, you know, to do? But I think it will allow us to go deeper into their practices, counselors, and into our goals to achieve the vision of Middlesex. So I, I don't, I don't think it, it does that.
Thank you.
I'll go again. So I do think what we're talking about, and it's a little bit what we're experiencing with a psychologist, is as much as people want measures and analytics, which are important, it can be hard because social, emotional in, above itself, that can be, those two things don't always mesh exactly. But I do think, and, and to pick up on Mr. Pavia's example- But I do think, and to pick up on Mr. Pavia's example, I imagine if a parent's calling in about a child, and then due to your schedule, there is a lag. It, it's concerning to both the professional as a guidance counselor, and concerning to the parent who's saying, what, what's going on? Adding this guidance counselor, does that put back into effect sort of like a 24-hour rule? Someone will be back in touch with you of 24 hours? Does it help the caseload enough that you think, while maybe your entire vision won't be implemented, some of the, some of the kind of rudimentary, here's what you can expect because we just have more manpower, can be measured and can be explained throughout the year? If we ask for a look back to see how it's going, you could help, just in those small ways? Because sometimes those small things are what the parent at home is really concerned about, and I imagine as a guidance counselor who loves your job, you're concerned about.
Yes.
I like that answer.
I do think that, that having that extra person.
I'm not trying to put 24 hours like to the dot. I don't know if it's 12 or 18 or 48.
No, I know what you mean, I know what you mean. It does have an extra, give an extra person. So, counselors talk a lot to each other, to me, to staff, and I think it, that an added person is another collaborative buddy in the building that understands the students, that is familiar with the students of a specific grade level, and that someone to share ideas with and bounce ideas off of, yes. I, it is always our goal to answer parents in, in appropriate time. They always like to have a few answers before they make that phone call. Is there anything you want to add to that? I can feel them, just that pull.
So I'm a grade dedicated counselor, just eighth grade, I have 50-ish percent, and I would say I'm pretty close to that. As, I don't know how my counterparts in split grades manage that. Because of the, so not only are they prioritizing, am I going to a student of concern meeting, or am I going to a parent meeting in a different grade level? They're then circling back to the meeting that they didn't get to, and following up on all of those things. So it's almost like a double timing, which all has to be done during the day. So, my sense is, because I see the timestamp on his emails, he works 24/7. So, as a grade dedicated counselor, I, I feel like that is manageable. Our split counselors, I'm not quite sure, because it sort of feels like, it's not double the load, because it's not double the students, but you're serving double the teams. And so, double the teachers, you know, they're just, yeah.
The, the, the other thing I would add is that with the, with the additional staff members, so for instance, if I was able to work with Sue McIsaac in the seventh grade, and just with Sue McIsaac in the seventh grade, the last board meeting, if something came up about, you know, student crises, and somebody asked the question, you know, well, how long does a typical student crisis last? And that, you know, listen, if you, if anybody can tell me the answer to that, I would make a lot of money. But, you know, you could have a student who's, who is in crisis for two, three, four days, a week, two weeks, who you're spending a, a lot of time with, supporting, getting them into the building, getting them to your office, getting them out of your office to, to a couple of classes. And so while that is going on, it would be, it'd be phenomenal to, to be able to know that there's a, a staff member who's not trying to pick up after me, but who's working with me, instead of me having to then run to a different grade to figure what I, what I missed for the last three days, because I was with the student who was, who was in crisis. So, yes, to your point that you really can't quantify some of that, I mean, we, we try, we, we survey, we take data, we, we do time studies, but sometimes that all goes out the window, and, and we're really there to work for your kids. And if, if a kid needs us, that's where we're going to be. And then it's just run as quick as we can to catch up, in my case, run as quickly as I can to catch up with, with everything else that went on for that time that I was with that kid.
Is there a question? Mrs. McCannan?
In a, if we were to say yes, in a year's time, what would you want to come back and tell us? These are the four things that we've accomplished that I'm glad we could do.
I would want to tell you that we've expanded our work with students in groups, that we've expanded our, the number of guidance, I'll call them lessons, that are aligned with the Connecticut framework. I would want to tell you that the counselors were able to meet with every student, so if, for some reason, they have to be called down, I don't think they're in trouble, and that they understand what a counselor's for, and seek them out. And I would like to give you some data about that, really based, basically, student scene, all of the groups, that kind of thing, so that we could really take a look and dive into the effectiveness of our program. Also, looking at that student of concern, I'd like to be able to say to you that we have tracked those students of concern, that the, and that the interventions either worked or we had to make other recommendations for that child. I know you'll hold me to that if you give me this counselor too, so I hope somebody wrote that down.
One last question, I feel like Jill and I are playing ping pong, but do you anticipate that this is a sufficient need? Two counselors per grade is sufficient based on enrollment we see, or do you anticipate coming back for three next year? Three per grade, I mean, how, do you feel comfortable that two satisfies your needs and goals?
I do. I do feel comfortable with that, I, I do. But if you're making the offer.
Listen to the rest of my night.
I guess to that point, when you look out a couple of years, and you look at the enrollment, which I think Mr. Feeney and company do a good job of projecting that, and you think about the social-emotional learning, and you think of the increase in kids in crisis, are you thinking out two, three, or four years to that point? And, and trying to build in a thought process? It seems to me that we will be talking more about counselors, and social workers, and psychologists than we may be talking about the addition of teachers over the next couple of years, as we try to support these kids.
I guess I would only be able to answer that after I really had the nuts and bolts down, and, and really had the design of that program. Though it is in place, a lot of it is kind of in my head and theoretical. We've only taken small steps, and that I could better evaluate the success of that additional counselor in meeting student needs at that time. But I think that two counselors per grade level makes a lot of sense. And I, I appreciate that question, because I think you're asking me, am I going beyond the immediate need? And I guess right now, I do see just the immediate need, but I do think it would be sufficient in years to come with knowing the middle school child, and knowing pretty much how they present, and, and how we can address them.
I just feel, and I, I thank you all for coming and spending late nights here with us. It's much, must, much appreciated, and the, the information, the data you've given us has been great, but I guess my takeaway from it is, I always feel in listening to your days, your kids in crisis, your reactions to parents' phone call, that you're never ahead of it, that you're always just trying to barely stay even. And I'm not sure that's good enough for our students.
And that's a good point.
And that's my concern, as, you know, more students come in crisis, parents see more stuff at home that they need help with, the pressures of just school in general, moving from the middle school to the high school. I just, there is that feeling that we're, we're barely staying even with it, and it's almost, to me, something we should try and get ahead of.
And, and to be honest, we've really, this is new, collecting data on this, and, and surveying students, and keeping track of everything, and, and how time is spent. We've really only just begun that, and that's what led us really to this, this need, or, or being able to say, whoa. So, I guess I'll be back, is what you're suggesting.
Thank you.
All right, so given that, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to echo that, I, I was saying reactionary, from what I, you know, what you were saying, Duke, because it sounds like you're very much reactionary in many cases. And I look forward to hearing the implementation of the vision, where you're getting out, and that role has, if not, evened out a little bit, and shifted to the more pushed out rather than reactionary. So I look forward to you, the update on your vision. Thank you.
So, just to make sure, because this is the second time we've had you here, the first time with lots of data from your survey, and information and numbers that you collected, but is there anyone, does everyone here feel that they've asked their sufficient questions and have sufficient information at this time, as we move forward? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Feeney?
There was a follow-up question on breaking down the department chairperson budget placement. So on the right-hand follow-up aside, I do have the line item, the RC and the object code, and the amount that was transferred into those lines. There is one minor typo, is 76 Fitch O2, really should be 5 DHS O1. It was coming from that line. So, we did have, what, four people move into DHS Responsibility 1, line 5, and one moved into middle school, Middlesex, line 99, for the amount listed on the right-hand side. What is listed below is the replacement values that were put into the budget. So, for example, what you will see here is on line 9, DHS O1. Under the English account, we added a salary of, based of, on a .22 percent that filled in, that backfilled the .22 that went over to curriculum development.
Mike, can you go over that correction? I'm sorry, I missed it.
Yes. So, under the top part, it says, line 76 Fitch O2.
Yep.
It should say, line 5 DHS O1. So the department heads are all placed in DHS, or the middle school, and one is placed in the middle school.
Thank you.
The values are still the same.
Any questions on the department chairperson? Okay?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan. So if we, if we choose not to go forward with the curriculum supervisors being supervisors full-time and remaining as a .2 teacher, we would save $67,000?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Greenwich Boys and Girls Swimming at the Greenwich Y.
So there was a follow-up question on how much do we pay the Boys and Girls, pay for swimming at the Greenwich Y, as well as the Boys and Girls Club? The answer is the girls' swim team, to use the Greenwich Boys and Girls Club is $4,600, and to, for the girls and boys to dive at New Canaan YMCA is $5,500 each.
Any questions? Mrs. Maxmar?
And just to clarify, that is the, is there any parent contribution beyond this, or this is the full amount charged by the venue?
So that was the rental fee that the district currently pays. I believe the other one is located, it will take me a couple of minutes to find, on another spreadsheet that Mr. Manfredonia had provided to us, that broke out each individual sport, what the costs were associated with officiating, the rentals, and so forth.
I, I think what Mrs. Maxmar is asking is, that $4,600, is that all assumed by the parents, or there, I mean, by the district? Or there are additional fees paid by parents? Or does the district pay for all the rentals for swimming?
I believe that was in Mr. Manfredonia's, which would take me a couple of minutes to find. So if we wanted to...
I believe it's all district pay.
Yeah, I, I believe it is correct.
Yes, it's either part of our agreement with the Y, or district pay.
We can double-check it.
That's basically the question. Thank you for these numbers, and just to clarify, is that just the district share of the rental fee, or is that the entire rental fee, meaning the district assumes 100% cost of the rental? Does that make sense?
Yes, that is the entire rental fee. Now I'll basically just go back to make sure that if it's, the district is paying 100%, or what portion the parents are paying, if you give me one minute. Or if you can go on to the next question.
No, no, we'll move on to the next one. What are the caseloads for the psychologists? Everyone has their chart? Take a minute to review, are there any questions?
By the way, excuse me, the response to this question is not only on this side of the paper, but also follows through on the, on the rear side.
I looked my side, I read both sides. Mike, if you, if, if, you could just, I know you wrote the summary there, but could you just sort of walk me through what those numbers mean?
On the caseload, may I?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Thank you.
Mike handed it out, that's why.
And if you can, just look at it for a moment. If you look at the caseload information, in response to what are the caseloads, this is how we presented it. We did it by school, you've got School A, B, C, D, and E. We showed the number of students who are receiving counseling as a caseload, which is mandated, and then the total caseload by school. I do want to answer one obvious question before the question's asked, actually in that chart, if I may for a moment. When you look at the, in the second column, when you see general education students, including 504, planned students, the variability in different schools does change throughout the school year. Just to let you know, this is as of the date of November, or December, actually, and it's really based on student need. It can change any time. But if you look as we go through it, at the total caseloads, and we come to the amount of hours they're actually spending in terms of delivery of service, and I'll go through that, it's fairly similar among all five buildings. But let me walk you through that. So what we did was, we tried to, if you recall from December 11th presentation, we actually took, as we went through the one-to-one sessions of service hours, we went through a small group, we added them up, and the last column you see on the bottom chart are the total service hours per six-day cycle. We then went back and took the presentation that we gave to you. If you recall, we had said that the average evaluations were 50 evaluations for psychologists, and we also said, I think, the average meeting attendance was about 438. We disaggregated that also onto a six-day cycle, or onto a month. And what we came up with in the formula is, and if you look at the summary on the bottom, the average counseling services in a six-day cycle in six hours, the evaluation process also, looking at it, is about 12 hours, and meeting attendance actually came out to about 13.2 hours. If you add 16 hours, 12 hours, and your 13.2 hours, you'll see the total amount of hours that is spent by a school psychologist currently in an elementary school is approximately, or actually, 41.2 average hours in a six-day cycle. Looking at a six-day cycle, if you take 41.2 hours, and by the way, based on the contracted service hours, they have 36 hours in a six-day cycle, you can see that the 5.2 hour difference really has to be made up either during lunchtime, psychologists do take work home as well, or during prep time. So, we know that all time allocated, based on what we've shared with you, both on the average and looking at their actual caseloads, really takes up 100% of a school psychologist's time currently in the elementary school.
Mrs. McCannan?
Thank you for this breakdown. It's extremely helpful to really see what the day, how the day rolls up. So, understanding that the evaluation process is mandated, and direct counseling is a result of IEPs or 504s, so those are really not variable numbers. The only variable number appears to be meeting attendance. So can we, like the counselors, really visit that question of meetings, and whether or not we're absolutely confident that we have the right number of team meetings? It was described in a previous board meeting as really a progress update. So can you talk a little bit about meetings, and defend or not?
Yes. And we can speak to, we have been really committed and vigilant to making sure that we're efficient in our meetings. We actually have templates now that we follow to make sure that we stay within our timelines. We've also looked at ways to make them more efficient by meeting with parents, perhaps prior to a meeting, reviewing evaluations, to again, be more efficient at times. We've found success in our current strategies that we're using. There's always room for improvement, but in answer to your question, I think we have maximized and been efficient in all of our meeting attendance, and we're being responsible about it.
I have a follow-on. Is the only purpose of a team meeting progress, or is, it's, I understood it in the last time to be described as effectively a progress check-in?
So let me elaborate, it's not limited to progress checking. It's actually IP mandated. A team meeting is actually based on, there may be consultants working with the family. It's also to update where we are from what we planned the prior month, or the prior, whatever the intervals are for that. But it's not only consultants, it's progress, and it's also very often going back and changing based on current levels of performance, what the services might be, or what we're looking for, for the students.
So, I'm going to push off of that. When we say they're IP mandated, it means at some point when the IP was creative, created, everyone has agreed that these team meetings need to take place. I guess my question would be, do we find more requests for more, are we finding an increased request for these team meetings in PPTs recently?
There, I don't, you know, I'd have to go back on the data, but from my experience over the last four years, there hasn't been an increase. It's really designed when we really want to address, one, very often children with intensive needs, also children who have intensive needs that really require a level of support that you have to go back every month and look at where we are. that you have to go back every month and look at where we are and where we want to go. So there's really a trajectory of how they're doing. But I think it's, it's responsible, it's thoughtful, I don't think it's anything-
So I guess what I'm asking is to maybe help dispel a myth that just because I want a team meeting, I can ask for a team meeting and I get a team meeting. Versus the team meeting is actually a very thoughtful, structured, planned meeting that is necessary in order to monitor a student's ability to access their education.
And I would also add to that to implement the IP. Thank you.
Mrs. McCannan?
Looking at a team meeting versus a PPT, is there any efficiency in using one mechanism or the other?
You don't have to have mandated be, team members at a team meeting. It's who you agree upon. So maybe one might, one month you might have one or two providers because you're really working on those discrete skills and it really varies as opposed to a PPT where you have main, mandated requirements for attendees.
Mrs. McAdams? And looking, thank you very much for the information. Looking at these two charts that you've put together, is it correct to say then you have not captured any hours or time that the current psychologist is being used to be, I'm going to use the word proactive, or pushing in and talking about issues that might relate to the curriculum or to assist the teacher? It sounds like these are all very much reactionary times. Is that correct?
Not necessarily reactionary, they're really mandated times.
Well, mandated clearly IEP, mandated 504, but I'm looking at your general ed pool here, there are also non-504 students, correct?
And if you look at the number, the small, the small number of students, they're also, very often they're part of either a lunch group and they're working in that team, so it's already students who are in and mandated for that. So that's where you'll probably see the opportunity, we have to work with children in general ed. And it's limited to that scope.
So are they all mandated from what you're saying?
Are all of the caseloads mandated? Yes. So you're saying if there's a general education child in a group with other children, is that mandated? No, it's agreed upon.
So that in fact, as, as Shirley and her team and the principals deal with the mandates and they include others, I consider it to be rather proactive rather than reactionary. They're seeking out, they, they have a mandated requirement. Within that framework, they're absorbing others into it because on a proactive basis, we can help those kids as best we can.
I guess what we'll try to get to, that there's not a lot of time for them to be more proactive to a general, I'm going to use general education environment based upon what you're showing here.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to, thank you.
So we're using a six-day formula, what's the contracted work hour for the psychologists?
Thirty-six hours, six hours a day.
So psychologists work six hours a day. No, I know, I see that.
Half hour for lunch.
I'm just asking, teachers, you're contracted slightly differently.
Six and a half, but we took out the thirty minutes for lunch.
That was nice of you.
They don't actually get lunch, they work during lunch.
That's where they make up those five and a half hours.
Mrs. McCannan? Can I push again on the facilitator? Again, we brought the facilitator in to help manage meetings, to help manage the total efficiency. We talked about the facilitator last time, doing a lot of PPT work. I get concerned about overloading staff we don't need, particularly if it is true that the facilitators are effectively very procedural. I'm curious to know, so let me say this, is that description correct? Is really the focus of the, of the facilitator truly procedural? Or would you describe that position a little differently? And can you talk about that vis-à-vis the psychologist?
So it is primarily procedural in terms of what their governance is. But also in that procedural, of course, are their relationships with families. They're being a resource to families, they actually have family coffees on a regular basis. They make sure that they're someone who's really available to have those conversations. So you can do some intervention or pre-referral prior to having to go to PPT. So I think they are available to families, to support staff in the school as well as to ensure that we are compliant with our procedural safeguards.
So I'll ask a question slightly more bluntly, do we still need our SESs facilitators?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Sorry, just a point I heard briefly in there. You mentioned the lunch bunch, does that fit into meetings, counseling or evaluation?
That fits into actually in, in the first chart that you're looking at, general education, including 504 plan and the number of students receiving direct counseling service in that area.
So was that meetings, evaluations, or was that?
So meetings and evaluations would be limited to children who've been referred to the PPT or are conducting triennial evaluations or reevaluations. So children who currently have an IEP.
So then this is part of team meetings?
Team, team meetings are also recommended by a PPT and they would be for children with IEPs.
So it's, it's part of counseling, right?
Yes.
Thank you, that's-
I'm veering us back and forth, but it's because I'm trying to manage FTEs. SESs is our necessary at our elementary schools. Is it still necessary to have a dedicated SESs for each elementary school? Is their caseload heavy enough? Is their utility appropriate, one at each elementary?
So just based on the number of meetings, if we're looking at four-hundred-and-thirty-eight meetings, if we're looking at procedurally making sure, ensuring that we're compliant, you can't share them on buildings.
That's a little bit of an unfair question because I know that wasn't the topic, thank you. Any other questions on psychologists? Mrs. Ritchie?
So I'm trying to do math and I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm coming out right. So basically there were each psychologist that you have currently, within a six-day cycle, they are working forty-one-point-two hours. And that is five-point-two hours above their thirty-six hours that they should be working within a six-day cycle. So, if you give, if you give each school an additional psychologist, they're going to fill that gap. And then, I guess I want to, I want to know where the other thirty-one hours, like specifically, are you just going to divide the caseload in half? But then there's, I guess if I'm just looking at purely hours worked in a six-day cycle, that seems like a lot of hours to fill.
So let me go to the first part of the question. We're not looking for the other psychologists to pick up the difference. I think actually Paula Blakely spoke to one of the models we're thinking of. It would be shared, there'd be two psychologists supporting students in both general ed and special ed. So it wouldn't be to pick up the hours.
But there's still a lot of hours that need to be filled. So if they take their current caseload and they divide it in half, there's-
Well, one, there's variability because the same numbers aren't year-to-year, that's one piece. And two, it is not uncommon in both elementary, middle and high school, psychologists write reports after school, they do that. They, they spend time during their lunch and during their, because I think the same way you asked the question about guidance counselors, there's never enough time to get things done. So you would never have a formula where there'd be enough time for everything without, I think, going into some of the other opportunities.
So there's more than, there's more than just the forty-one, you're saying there's more than forty-one-point-two hours in a six-day cycle? So that you're capturing forty-one-point-two, but there's more on top of that that's being done, that's not captured in that forty-one-point-two hour cycle?
I just want to come back to the original request, which was enunciated further by each of our elementary principals when they were here. The purpose of the additional psychologist is to help meet the needs of the general student population. When you split the load of the two psychologists so they can each deal with the special, with their special ed, with the special ed issues that they, they deal with that are mandated, the remaining time will be free to work with the general ed kids who are experiencing incredible problems. You know, I think the principal shared some of that with you. And that the, the, the current psychologists just can't deal with those issues at the elementary level because as you can see, they're occupied almost more than one-hundred percent of their time in dealing with their mandated responsibilities under the, under the special education provisions of the law. So this would be a boon for the general education population. And as I've stated over, you know, several times, is that if we can get to those problems at the elementary level, they should, over time, you will see a, a change in the kinds of issues we face at the middle school and the high school. Because we'll address those problems with those kids before they ever get to those other levels.
So it may be fair then for the board, again, to, to hear back that at the moment, I'll, I'll come to you in a minute, that these are all mandated services. So children who do not have mandated services, they do not have a plan, IEP or 504, they're, they're over their time in being able to service them. So it would be, it would be something for us to consider if we said we'd like the psychologist to track their new time and come back to us and tell us what their access now is in able, in being able to reach the kids who do not have mandated services. Is that, that is something that you would be able to track?
Sure.
Because I, I do think in some ways we're getting caught in these numbers. These are mandated hours, they are over their contractual time for mandated hours that we must subscribe to by law. And they are already over. So it speaks a little bit to if Johnny or Sally has a problem that, but they don't have an IEP or 504, that psychologist is already over their time limit based on just the mandated hours. And I believe that's what we heard last time. The principal saying that the teachers are now trying to deal with this, the principals are trying to deal with this. Is that a good, a fair way to look at this chart?
Yes.
That's correct.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Okay, so then if I understand these numbers, so you're telling me that right now, if you're not mandated for services, if you're a kid who's coming into school who's having a bad day and you don't have a 504 and you have, don't have an IEP, then you're not being served? You're not, you don't have access to a psychologist?
No, and I, and I think what the principal spoke to, and I think I spoke to at a prior meeting also, is that they are juggling. They're, they're leaving something, they're following, they're finding the time. There, there would not be an opportunity that would occur in a school where a child needs a psychologist and they're not going to have that access.
We're not seeing those numbers in here.
So the notion is, they may have to do more work after the day, they may have to do more, I mean, they'll have to juggle that time to find out, they're not going to not service a child. But most importantly, and I think what the principals and Dr. Landon were saying is, they can't do any pre-referral or any intervention. They can't do any classroom groups. They don't have the opportunity to do all the social-emotional learning that we'd want to do that would hopefully and ideally decrease the need for students, you know, needing services and would create a healthy climate of really the kinds of goals they were speaking to last week. So I think it's, it's those pieces. There will not be a child not seen. It's just what they're going to give up to get to that child.
Here's the, here's the reality, if you will. No kid who's in crisis of any kind is going to be left to wallow in his own juices, if you will. Somebody in that school is going to deal with that kid. And I can cite example, after example, in the short time I've been here, where principals have actually, and assistant principals have been in classrooms, in hallways, in other gathering places where they've had to intervene to help a kid in distress or in need. And that holds for teachers as well. And we've had paraprofessionals who've been engaged in that, in that too. So no child is ever left alone to suffer. Somebody's going to intervene. Unfortunately, and sometimes we, we do, take a psychologist out of their other mandated responsibilities and say, we need you right now. But in, at all other times, it's the other people in the building who are jumping in to help and work to make sure that no child ever has their needs overlooked.
Any other board questions? Mrs. McCannan?
In my capacity as a board member, I've had parents approach me and talk about classrooms that are, they believe not well-managed because of issues that stem from a child or interaction of, of children. Can you talk about that from a, from a, can you talk about that? Can you talk about the impacts of that and, because I want to use the word from a productivity point of view?
I think, I believe, I think we, the principals may have addressed this also, but if I may just support that as well. The notion of having the kind of support is about modeling and coaching teachers. And the idea of having a staff of two psychologists of being able to do, and I think we spoke about not only having them in the classroom and doing it, but modeling, coaching, and have the time available to do that. So I think that's how you change classroom climates. That's how you give the tools to classroom teachers to be able to intervene effectively with dysregulated behaviors. And that would be a really important part of our whole program.
Any other questions? Mrs. McAdams?
Just picking up on that same point, with the one that exists now, do you, does that exist at all or tell me how that does exist currently? For that one psycho, I mean, it's clearly, there's no time. But does it exist in any way, shape or form?
I mean, I would reach out to the buildings and I don't think it's scheduled or programmed, but whenever there's an opportunity, I know their principals and assistant principals work with psychologists to try to have them push in. Very often, I'm speaking of two buildings I know where there are some incidents of, of dysregulation of, of behaviors in the classroom, the psychologist does push in. And again, it's what she's giving up to get into there to have other opportunities. But it happens as, on a need basis. I don't think it happens precisely the way you were speaking before in a constructivist way.
Then is it correct that this individual might pick up more on the curriculum of the social? I'm thinking of what programs are we going to be looking at more professional development? More programs for this individual now to be more proactive with, we'll say, our general education population or our entire population?
Chris, I can jump in here. Not necessarily one person, as everybody has described, the two individuals in terms of how they support the teachers. So we now have a pre-K to twelve scope and sequence for health education. There are very sensitive topics within that health ed curriculum. Moreover, I think what our health curriculum does well is it integrates the social-emotional piece. So mindfulness strategies, for example. Or how do, you know, how do you deal with perhaps a, another child that you're interacting with and things aren't going well? How they come into those classes, whether it's through a morning meeting or a problem-solving conference, or coming in and just to give that teacher a particular strategy on how to work with that student, we would anticipate that that is a significant part of both of their roles, not just one, but both of them.
Thank you. Any other board questions on the psychologists? At this point, we will go through the RCs and signal modifications. So on psychologists, do you feel that you have enough information at this time as we do that? Oh, you want to go back to Mrs. McAdams' question?
Yes, so the answer to the swim diving, girls swimming, boys and girls diving, the parents pay one hundred, I mean, the district pays one hundred percent.
Okay, great, thank you for the clarification.
All right, Ms. Feeney, you're keeping a list as I do this, right?
I am, yes.
Okay, thanks. All right, we will start and we will go through RCs. I'll ask if you have a budget modification to note it. As much as you can with dollar amounts is valuable. This is where we put things on the table. We do not put additional modifications typically after this. So this is where you will signal your modification. Those are still up for discussion at our next two sessions. But this is where we put things on the table. It helps inform the public what we're looking at, it helps us plan and know what we are focusing on at this point. So whether it's an add, a cut, this is where we make our list. Everyone ready to go? Okay, I will begin with RC one. Mr. Maroni?
I would like to propose a cut of sixty-seven thousand dollars. Sorry, can't read this. One hundred and fifty, sixty-seven, one hundred and fifty-six-point-eight-zero dollars for the curriculum supervisors.
Okay, any others? No, no, we're not actually, this isn't our add-cut list, this is where we put on the table. Any board member can put up their modification at this point. That is our list then to consider, but this is not add-cut night, so we don't vote on the cuts at this point.
Can I ask a question just to clarify? Dennis, I just wanted to clarify, in conjunction, if it's related to the curriculum supervision, did you want to put that whole into DHS or did you want to parse it out? I see you're taking that total, but did you want to apply it then to Fitch and MMS?
If, if I could, I know what the intent is. So I can basically back into those lines on a spreadsheet for you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, I just didn't want to see it, we were going to see it the other way.
Are you just taking those four lines that were the DHS department head?
I did the five. The, the total that we just got on our handout tonight of sixty-seven, you said is that's the backfill to, for the curriculum supervisor to not teach their one class.
So Dennis is basically saying no chair, no change to the department chairperson's job at this point?
And Michael will apply it to the different RCs?
I will, yes.
Okay. Anything else for RC one? I'll put substitutes on, please. Sure, I'm going to put a cut. I am going to put a cut of $33,000. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to RC two, Fitch Academy. Anything?
No, just as it applied to the other, Mr. Maroni's cut?
Yeah, department chairpersons will do about the whole. Seeing none on Fitch, RC three, Middlesex. Similarly, I'm going to put a cut on for substitutes, $7,000, bringing them back to budget of last year. I'm basically taking up the increase for substitutes of $7,329. Anything else from middle school? None. I can move on? I'll move on to the elementary schools, I'll plan to take them as a whole unless anyone wants to break them down. With the exception of Royal and Ox Ridge, I'm going to put all substitutes down onto their year prior's increase. Or their year prior budgeted amount. So no increase in any of those lines with the exception of Ox Ridge and Royal, which seem to be managing. Basically, I think the message is for those schools to manage those lines as best they can. Mr. Feeney, can you look at Ox Ridge, RC eight? Can you look at the FTEs for me? Can I just get back to me and see if that count is correct?
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else in the RC zone to, Mr. Burke?
For the elementary schools as a whole, there's a proposal to increase, to hire four psychologists. I would like to cut that to two. I don't know how, to break it off by school, by within the elementary school. So I don't know how best to express that.
So you're going to reduce the budget by a reduction?
I'm sorry?
.5 in each school.
.5 in each school.
So a total reduction of two and a half?
Yes.
A token even only as a .35.
How many psychologists do you want to end up with? In addition, new psychologists? So a reduction of three psychologists? Two psychologists, a reduction of two. A reduction of two.
You already have one.
Yes.
We already have one from Central Oakville. So you're saying just hire one psychologist? You want two more?
No, she wants to hire, he wants to hire two more.
You want to hire two?
So you're reducing it?
Yes.
So we'll have 2.35?
Yes. Got that, Mr. Feeney?
Yep, reduction to two.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to athletics, RC eleven. Keep me honest, everybody, RC eleven. Mr. Maroni?
I would like to propose an addition of $24,737.50.
Wait, slow down, slow down.
$24,737.50, if my math is correct, which will then, which will, and I don't know where this line item goes, but that will then bring up the percentage part of the BOE paid, part of, out of, for, I can't speak, sorry.
Off-site.
Off-site athletic teams. So then all athletic teams will be at minimum of 50% contribution from the Board of Education.
Okay, so you're?
Can you list which teams?
Yeah, can you list which teams?
Girls hockey, boys hockey.
Wait, wait, slowly.
It's this sheet.
Correct. Girls hockey, boys hockey, and skiing. Brings them all up to 50%. We leave squash at 56 and we don't touch anything else. But the minimum of each sport becomes 50%.
That's line 102004.
What about squash, swimming?
Minimum of 50%. If it's over, then that's okay, minimum of 50%.
Mr. Feeney, we have to check the math on that.
Yes, I got it.
So you're looking to fund facility fees at 50% of what the total obligation is for all, a minimum for all teams?
Correct.
Dennis, if we're paying more than 50%, would you reduce that to 50% so it's equitable among all teams?
I am not proposing that alteration. I am just proposing a minimum of 50% for all sports. If it's over, then someone else can make a cut, make a proposal to cut. I'm proposing a minimum of 50%.
And the 50% if I could just, is for girls hockey, boys hockey, skiing?
Correct, I have 63, 87, 50, 11, 250, and 7,100. If my math isn't correct.
The theory being that if, well, I think we need to understand the numbers. The theory being that if parents ask for more, they can, but the sort of minimum threshold?
The theory is, is that if we feel that it rises to the level to be a varsity sport, the Board of Education should fund at least half of that funding. That's the theory.
Okay. No, we're going to, we'll discuss, Mrs. McNamara?
Sort of keeping on the same thought process, I would propose a cut of, I'll just let Mr. Feeney do the math, then to, I can discuss the concept. Reducing the fee paid by the Board of Education for the swim, dive, and dive at our off-site locations to 50%.
All off-site locations?
No, 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 no.
Weekend off-site locations?
No, the swim, dive, and dive, as presented here, to have a cut of half that.
So only for the weekend practices?
So only for the weekend practices? I'm not involved in their scheduling, I'm just looking at this number to which Mr. Feeney said we pay 100%. I am looking for the district to now share that cost 50% with the members of the swim, dive, dive for these three line items to a 50% share with parents. In keeping with Mr. Maroni's presented thought of a share with the parents.
Okay. But you are not touching the agreement with the why?
I am not, this has nothing to do with the Darian YMCA. No, nothing to do with the Darian YMCA, I think that's a separate issue. This is only those facilities to which we pay for our athletes to access their site.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, but that was only for the swim, swimming, diving, and dive.
Swim, dive, dive, for the new Canaan and Greenwich.
Gotcha, yep, I got it.
Mr. Maroni?
I have another addition to, sorry, can I go?
Yep.
To line 431, account 123013. I would like to purchase 69 girls lacrosse helmets at $140 a helmet for a total of $9,660.
Are you buying girls lacrosse helmets?
Girls lacrosse helmets. There's a new helmet which is, the Lacrosse Federation is sponsored. New York City has mandated in their schools, the state of Florida has mandated in their schools, Brown University has mandated at Brown. And I think we should be a proactive Board of Education and fund the safety of our children.
I'm sorry, how many helmets? Give me that dollar amount again, 9,000?
9,660, 69 helmets, there are 69 girls lacrosse members on the team.
What was the cost per helmet?
140.
And where did you get that number?
From a website where it was telling me that they can range from 140 to 150, so I'm hoping Mr. Manfredonia can find the lower end.
So each of these, for those who are new or don't remember last season, each of these will be discussed in depth during our add cut night. Was there another hand up, Mrs. McNamara?
Line 24006.
Line?
Yep. Count, I'm sorry, count 24006, the ice machine?
What about it?
Cut.
So that dollar amount was, I couldn't tell within that addition of 5,500 for us?
I believe it was 5,500.
If it was all of it, yeah.
Okay.
Or to clarify, that's why I specified the ice machine. If he has, he's replenishing supplies, I'm not looking to draw from that number.
Anything else in athletics? Can I?
Mr. Brown?
I'm sorry, Mr. Brown?
Go ahead.
Oh, I just, I don't think we got back, information back on account 102004 to find out if that was all a negotiated, that 8% increase was all negotiated by CAC. If we could just double check on that?
That's the officials.
Yep, Mr. Brown?
I was just going to propose lines 412, 412, and line 413, 413 be cut to zero.
413?
And 412.
Let's be brought to zero?
Zero.
Textbooks and resources?
412 and 413.
Anything else in athletics? Move on to RC 12, maintenance. Seeing nothing. RC 13, music. Anything? Seeing nothing. Let's go, RC 14, art. Nothing. RC 15, technology. Mrs. Stein?
I apologize for not raising this earlier as I was reviewing the budget. I was looking at FTEs and trying to see where we can be more efficient. And I'm going to put this out there more for discussion and some thought around the position. So I'm going to put on Director of Instructional Technology. The position is open, we haven't filled it. I would love to have a discussion around, is this the right position? Can we handle in-house another way and not have $172,000 in the budget? So I'm just putting it out there, I'm not saying we don't need a director, I don't, this is not putting all sports on like last year. This is really for a discussion and a thought, or a discussion around this position. And I apologize for not raising it earlier, but.
So your question is, it can be a cut or a modification?
Cut or modification.
Okay. Personnel? I'm sorry, there's nothing else in technology? I skipped ahead, administration, RC 16. Anything?
Yeah, on line 609, yep.
Do you have a modification?
Yeah.
I have.
Well, you can, wait.
Okay, we'll do my modification first, you guys can modify after if you'd like.
Legal services, I'd like to look at the cost of bringing in all redactions in-house and taking that outside of our attorney's fees. Is there a cost savings to either adding to the workload that we have or even hiring a skilled person to do that rather than paying the attorney's fees for that?
So I'll make another modification based on yours. I would love a number from the administration on what our actuals are and what, maybe raising this number to what our run rate is showing. I don't know what that exact dollar number is, and Mr. Feeney, maybe you could provide that.
Do you want that add outside of redaction fees or do you want?
Outside. I think your idea is a great idea, but if that's not a feasible solution, then I think we need to bring the number to where we're actually expending this year, unless there's a reason not to.
Makes sense? Anything else? Mr. Maroni?
I'd like to, I forgot to look at this in all of the other RCs, but I'd like to reduce our mailing expenses, and I'll throw a number out of $10,000.
Reduce mailing expenses equally throughout the district, $10,000?
Correct.
Mrs. McNamara?
Just to clarify, is that to line 6112 where you see mailing 30,000?
Correct.
Okay.
But there's also mailing in elementary school, all schools, all schools have mailing expenses too. 10,000 dollar cut to all those mailing expenses.
So you want an equal cut everywhere that adds up to 10,000?
How about an appropriate cut, if it's just 10 grand, that adds up to 10 grand?
What's a cut?
So proportional amounts always equals to 10.
Okay. Okay. Seeing none. Personnel? Mr. Feeney, can you see how a cut of $50,000 to our turnover rate would affect things?
Increase of?
Increase, I'm sorry.
So bringing it to 350? Or 300, I'm sorry?
400.
Anything else? RC 19?
Can I go back, sorry? Can I propose a cut of 111,881 for budget control?
A cut of, say the number again?
111,881 dollars to go back to where we were last year.
How many sections of budget control are you taking out?
I'm just going back to where we are last year, just to discuss. Maybe it's not a dollar amount, it's just a discussion of going through those budget, the budget control numbers.
All right, you have to decide what you're doing. I can't decide for you.
I just want to have it on the table to discuss.
All budget control?
Correct. The budget control line item, right?
Yep. What's your modification?
I think we need to discuss what we're going to do with that number and not just have a blanket approval of four budget, four FTEs.
So all of budget control is on the table? So? So, to be clear, just so we know what we're doing here, budget control is for hiring teachers when sections break, and you would like to put the entire amount on the table?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanna, we're all, three of us are taking notes, so I wanna make sure we get it right.
It's a discussion for the board, if we don't, if we don't flag it, then we don't have the discussion.
So you're not proposing a dollar amount cut?
Correct.
Okay, but effectively what you are doing, so you have to realize what effectively it is. Effectively, you are putting the entire budget control amount on the table for a cut or a modification by the Board of Education.
Yes.
Before it would go to a vote that you could amend the cut, right?
Yeah.
Well, he hasn't put a dollar amount, so.
Right.
Well, he has, he has put every section of budget control on, but Mrs. McCammon is correct. What happens is, we go through, there's a motion, the motion carries or doesn't carry, and there's discussion. It's just.
It's a bit of a surprise.
RC nineteen. Curriculum. We ready? RC twenty, finance. Seeing none. RC twenty-two, tech ed.
Did you do twenty-one? Twenty-one library.
I'm sorry, twenty-one, library. Thank you. Anything? RC twenty-two, tech ed.
So just to be clear, that discussion we had this evening, that's where we're seeing, is that where we're seeing the professional development?
No, it's actually, Project Lead the Way is in my budget.
I think it's in the description, in your budget.
In RC nineteen, yes.
Yeah. But I have a.
You have the same note as we have?
Yeah, actually the same thing. Line seven eight eight, professional development, two five zero zero three. I have a note that we're gonna hear more about that today, so I'll propose a cut of five thousand.
I thought that was computer science.
I know. Is that what that, what? I thought it said it was seven thousand, so I'm confused. We can talk about it at the next meeting, but.
So your cut is for how much?
We'll put five thousand, pending further information, which I have a note that it was discussed tonight. And if it was, I just wanna tie it into the, what was it, into this number.
Okay. RC twenty-three, summer school. Seeing none. RC twenty-four, special education. Mrs. Stein.
I'm gonna propose to line, I can't read it, excess cost, I'm gonna add a hundred thousand dollars.
So putting us at two point eight?
Eight, seven, nine.
Sorry?
Line eight, seven, nine.
So Katie, you're wanting us to plan for an additional a hundred thousand dollars in revenue?
Yes, yes. It's an add, but it's really.
Yes.
Right, right. It's a revenues. So to two eight five one. I think that's worth a discussion, all of it, cut or either way, so I'm just flagging. It's on the table.
It's on the table.
So is it just that specific amount, or any amount?
Well, other people can put other numbers.
You can put other numbers if you like.
Do we have to do that now, or do we do that now?
Now.
What's the rationale for a hundred thousand?
My rationale is.
I'll agree with your rationale.
I would say that I think we can, you know, I don't think we can go too high because I fear that next year, if we overshoot, then it starts us off in the budget season in a tougher position, but I do think there's room to go up. I mean, that's, I didn't come up with the dollar number for any other reason, then I think it's a reasonable number to add.
Okay, just asking.
My feeling, I would look to see at what the result is at two eight five one, what's the result at two nine? My feeling is that we need to begin to look at this year over year, the students that we're dealing with. And I think that what we started to hear forecasted is next year, that we are looking for a significant decrease, if the state, even if the state remains the same. This year, it seems from what was reported, we may, we may be anticipating some more revenue, and so it would bring us more in line with what we think could actually happen. But I would signal for the first time to the board, and my first time being on the board, that I am not looking at this as a percentage projection to stick to, I'm looking at year over year. And I think that next year, we'll be in a different situation from what was reported out. And so we may not be reporting such high numbers and anticipating such a contra expense to our budget. But two eight five one or two nine are both numbers that I'd be willing to entertain for this year. Anybody else? All right, fixed expenses, RC twenty-five. Mr. Feeney, do we have any OPEB or retirement numbers from the town yet?
We do, and those are the numbers that are plugged in here.
In here like we budgeted for?
Yes.
So we're right on target?
Accurately, yes, I use the actuary report to put these numbers in.
Okay. Anything on healthcare yet?
No, but you can flag that and I can look at it.
Yeah. Can we do account eight two zero oh three? Flag healthcare, please. And I can't put a dollar amount to it, it's just part of our going out to bid process. I'd just like to check where we are on it, and if we have any room in there. Early learning program. RC twenty-six. I'll put substitutes on on this line. Down to last year's budget, yeah, last year's budget. An increase of a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty-five percent is unacceptable. Anyone else on RC ELP? Okay, I'll do it.
I'm sorry, Tara, you're putting it to the twenty seventeen eighteen level, or?
I'm putting it to eighteen nineteen's budget, forty-five hundred. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me, I'll put it on, to, let me put it, I'll keep it at ten thousand this year, where we're estimated for this year.
Can that also come with then staff numbers? Because the number of staff in ELP fluctuates a little bit, and I just wanna make sure that we're comparing apples to apples.
It does, we're just looking at increases of ten thousand, then six thousand, nine thousand, then we're budgeted forty-five hundred, we're at ten thousand. I think what we need to do is explore management of substitutes issues over there, but if personnel helps us do that, that's great.
So you're proposing bringing it to ten thousand?
The cut, we're budgeted for eleven five, so it's a cut of fifteen hundred. Anyone else? I'll put an add on tuition. We have an increase of three percent, can you show us what an increase of four and a half percent would be?
Madam Chair. In the spirit of that, I forgot, yeah, I think it's in, I thought it was back here, but our field fees, I don't think we've charged more in that in ten years. Can we increase a five percent charge on that?
We increase them this fall?
We increase them.
We did.
Yeah, every, every year.
We review those every fall?
Never mind, sorry.
Okay. We're getting there, so any ELP, anyone else? Alrighty. Move over to capital. Okay. Darian High School, Mrs. Stein.
I propose a cut of the security booth.
Anyone else, DHS? Okay, we'll move to Hindley School, where it is listed. Oh, I'm sorry, Middlesex, sorry, I didn't mean to switch Middlesex, Middlesex? Nothing. Hindley. Holmes. Don't steal it from anybody. I am going to propose a cut of the ventilation, univentilators, and request a number from Mr. Feeney, I mean, from Mr. Lynch and Mr. Feeney. I believe Mr. Lynch had sixty to eighty thousand dollars for a study for what he really needed to do for univentilators. So I would cut the project as listed in here and then add back the money necessary for the study. Makes sense?
And that would be both of those, right? The three fifty-one, seven eighty-eight, and the two ninety-three, one fifty-seven? And then replace that with whatever number Mike hits at?
Yeah. Oxbridge has none.
So sorry, can we go back to that, you're cutting both of those ventilation projects?
I'm, no, I'm cutting both. I'm cutting both numbers. We're on Hindley. I mean, we're on Holmes. But there was a number for abatement, and there was a number for the actual univentilators, which brought us up to around five hundred thousand dollars for the project, so I'm cutting that project.
So you're cutting the nineteen thirties wing classroom ventilators?
Yes.
But not the ventilation for staff room?
Both.
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 You're cutting both of those.
Both.
There was also a hundred thousand dollar abatement number.
Yes, there was a hundred thousand dollar abatement number that should also be cut because it was only tied to those projects.
Can we get a clarification from Mike when this comes back, that those two projects were tied together? I didn't understand the thirty, three thousand five, excuse me, three hundred thousand fifty-one and the two hundred thousand ninety-three as being the same project.
So here's what I'm looking to do, let's be specific. What the board voted to move from a priority two to a priority one against Mr. Lynch's recommendation. I am asking us to cut that project and all associated costs and to replace it with what Mr. Lynch said he would like, which was a study to understand the best way to deal with the univentilator situation.
I thought the provide ventilation for staff rooms and offices was a priority one.
Well, so that's what I'm asking, what he had is priority, what this board voted to move to priority two. I am asking to cut from that project.
I think it's just the first one.
Okay.
I think we have a clarification about the hundred thousand, I know, I think we all have it collectively in our notes, but just.
It's in the new budget page, it was put into your book. But, so is the board clear on what I'm doing? I'm just taking the priority two, but then we moved to priority one. That Mr. Lynch did not agree should be priority one.
Could we just have clarification from, on that? Because I, my recollection of one of them was a priority one.
Yeah. So he feels that the staff room has been a priority one and has always been a priority one, and that stays in. I'm only looking for the piece that we moved to priority one. Royal. None, tokenique. Central office. And then district wide. Ladies and gentlemen, we have our ad cut list. All right. Any other clarification from us?
Nope.
Okay. We will move on to further discussion and possible action on the Board Master Agenda February through August two thousand and nineteen. Dr. Landen.
We have two suggested changes, February twelfth, further discussion and possible action on the proposed new courses for Darian High School for the next school year. That would be rescheduled from the twenty-second. And the second one is an update for the department chair persons at the June eleventh meeting. Other than that, all remains the same.
And I sent the board an email about scheduling their other requests, but I will schedule it as part of a regular agenda item because it's not tied to district goals and objectives at the moment. But it is a continuing conversation, so we will get that scheduled. You just don't see that here on this master agenda at this time.
I'm sorry, can you just clarify why we can't put it in somewhere with your discretion as to move it around as needed?
We are going to put it in, but usually the master agenda is tied to district goals and objectives specifically. And that is not tied to specifics, so I just need to work with the administration to find a time. As soon as I have a date, I will get it to you, but it doesn't typically go on the master agenda when we add those.
Okay, but, I'm sorry, I'm still a little confused, so like, recognition of DPS retirees.
Happens every year.
Right, but that's not part of our goals.
No, but it's just a regularly occurring event that we don't wanna miss. This is just an add that came up at the request of the board, and I'm happy to put on it. I'm just letting you know why you don't see it on this master agenda. It's neither a reoccurring event nor is it tied to district goals and objectives. So as soon as I have a date, I'm happy to mail it out and get it.
Okay.
It's not, I wanted to let the board know, it's not lost. That is not, it's just not showing on the master agenda, and it's not scheduled at this moment. Mrs. McCammon.
We had asked the administration to come back with a possible opportunity to explore some of the conceptual aspects of special education that also have budgetary implications. Did we get an answer on that?
I don't think we've had board consensus on it.
Well, the way we left it was that the administration was going to come back to us with a recommendation.
We did leave it with Mrs. Klein, that you would have a recommendation of when to bring special education as part of the agenda.
If we needed additional meetings.
And if we needed additional meetings.
Thank you for the question. We were looking at, and that was, we do it currently three times a year, and we thought, and the question was really, the question coming back also, that at the beginning of the year to speak about our goals and then recap it at the end of the year. So we were thinking of doing a state of the state at the beginning of the year and then recapping at the end of the year.
Okay. I think that is fantastic as a model moving forward. I think we have some, some specific questions around special education, particularly around, there, some work has gone into it, but particularly around, for example, what's in the out-of-district placement number and how we analyze that, how we think about that in terms of planning. And I think that's a conversation that's probably worth having before we go into goals and objectives for this year.
I think it'll have to be a further conversation, I think. Unless the board wants to have it right now. The question is, do you need to schedule your next scheduled update on where you are in your goals and objectives? Do you know, do you have that, your quarterly update?
Well, we're doing as part of the board's goals and objectives, I think that's due at a February date we have, I believe.
Okay, so at the February date, if there are questions, is that, do you think, gonna provide you sufficient time to ask the questions you have?
sufficient time to ask the questions you have?
That's fine, as long as you're comfortable with me sending some questions offline and, you know.
I think, I think as always, I would send the questions in, we'll send it to the administration, then we can share out both those questions and the answers at a public meeting. But I do think that out-of-district placement ties into goals and objectives, so I think it's, they're reasonable questions and it seems a reasonable timeframe to do it. Anything else on the master agenda? So we have a motion to approve the master agenda. Mrs. Ritchie, second, Mr. Burke, all in favor? That is unanimous?
Unanimous, great.
Okay, we will move on to personnel. Sorry, give me a second. We'll move on to action items. Personnel items, Mrs. Stein, none for today. Is there any public comment this evening? None, okay. All right, may I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Dennehy? And Mrs. Stein? All in, oh, you can't, Mr. Brown?
I can, I just don't...
All right, I'll give you one. All in favor?
I can.
Thank you.